disabilities and need support to remain in the community, licensed or certified over 400 homes for daycare, child foster care, and adult foster care, screened over 150 individuals for mental health and/or chemical health civil commitments, inducted over 400 chemical health assessments. Our 16-bed Clay County detoxification program continues to serve multiple agencies and counties in our region. They work closely with area hospitals to accept clients that would otherwise require services provided by the emergency rooms. By admitting these clients, we can reduce the strain on the resources within the emergency rooms and provide a safe environment for the clients to detoxify. Dealing with those in need of mental health services continues to be one of the main focuses of public health. They currently coordinate a community initiative called Rethink Mental Health. Over the past year, this initiative has provided a year-long mental health cohort training program for 20 separate work sites, trained more than 750 professionals and citizens on the use of the Columbia Suicide Scale, and provided training for more than 40 schools in hopes of better, to better understand the impacts of childhood trauma with their students. Public health also continues to provide services with the WIC program, public health emergency preparedness, and nurse home visiting program. The sheriff's office has had a very busy year. On January 3rd, Lieutenant Mark Empting was sworn in as the 21st Sheriff of Clay County. Several organizational changes and promotions took place over the past year, which is believed will provide even better services to our citizens. The sheriff's office has experienced continued demands with 15,733 calls for service, an increase of approximately 30% over the past five years, providing transportation for 795 people traveling 93,080 miles kept deputies busy. The sheriff's office will continue to strive to fulfill their mission to provide services to the citizens of Clay County that will enhance their quality of life. Clay County continues to contract with the Minnesota Department of Corrections to provide probation services to all juvenile offenders in Clay County, as well as adult misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor offenders. The probation agents continue to see a significant rise in chemical addiction and unmanaged mental health. A new collaboration with the courts, law enforcement, and the Clay County Correctional Facility has probation agents providing pre-trial supervision, understanding that education is a key in reducing recidivism. Probation agents continue to utilize evidence-based programs with their clients. The county extension office continues to provide horticulture and agricultural education assistance to county citizens, addressing over 700 citizen inquiries, conducting over 90 home and farm visits, and 20 educational presentations were delivered to over 250 people. Clay County 4H programs continue to offer positive education programming across the county for our youth. There are 390 participants in 14 community clubs, after-school and summer programming accounts for another 432 youth with programming in every school, district, and the county. Our veteran service office continues to do an outstanding job serving the 3,736 identified veterans in Clay County. In addition to the office appointments, the VSO continues to offer outreach events throughout the county in hopes of increasing the number of identified veterans. VSO employees also remain active with the Veterans Court. The technology services department continues to supply quality customer support services to all county departments. They focus to continually stay current with technologies so county users have dependable and secure access to the applications and data they need to serve the public. The highway department works diligently at maintaining 1,600 miles of road in Clay County. In addition to the county road systems, the highway department continues to service most township roads in Clay County. 2019 provided the highway department with most significant challenge in recent memory. Working with our legislators and creating sustainable funding for transportation continues to be one of Clay County's top priorities. Solid Waste Services continue to be in high demand, working with townships and dropside programs. Holding collection events throughout the county and providing community education programs are just a few highlights. 2019 found Solid Waste preparing for a cell expansion at the county landfill. Solid Waste also continues to be a regional partner with the Prairie Lakes Regional Solid Waste Facility. This partnership is designed to extend the life of our landfill. Solid Waste continues to work closely with the city of Morehead in hopes of securing legislative funding for a new shovel-ready transfer station. As our campus grows, so does the demand on our building maintenance staff and custodial services. They continue to provide excellent customer service to our departments while maintaining the county campus that we can be proud of. The auditor treasurer's office is responsible for the collection of taxes, distribution of revenues, classifying tax assessment ratings, paying the county bills, county payroll, and certifying our accounting process to meet the government standards of acceptable practices. This fall, they also shared their expertise with the city of Morehead for special elections. Clay County continues to support a two-year tax abatement program which involves the cooperation of the cities and school districts in Clay County. The tax abatement program has led to new home construction, providing competitive incentives for citizens to build and reside in Clay County. The Minnesota State Auditor's Office presented its report to the county board referencing the year ending on December 31st, 2018. In the issuance of this audit report, the state auditor has issued an unqualified opinion of the county's financial statements, verifying we conform to the applicable accounting standards. The county board recently adopted the annual operating budget and tax levy for the year 2020. The total expenses for 2020 are estimated to be $94,775,196. The revenue sources necessary to cover these expenses include a $35,014,703 property tax levy, state aids, numerous grants, services, et cetera. The property tax represents a 7.09 increase over the 2019 levy. The Clay County witnessed a net growth in the tax base of 1.24% due to new construction, leading to a net levy increase of 5.85% for 2020. As we look ahead to 2020, with the county's growth, the demand for services continue to increase. This growth has led to departmental reorganizations and additional staff being hired to meet state mandates and service expectations of our citizens over a number of years. Clay County has found that it is in need of additional office space to accommodate the requests from the state for additional courtrooms and for departmental demands. In early 2020, a campus master planning study that began last fall will be presented to the Clay County Commissioners for consideration, with continued growth projected for Clay County. The goal of this study is to provide a strategic path to ensure campus needs can be met for the next 10 to 15 years. Flood protection also continues to be a point of emphasis. County commissioners and personnel continue to work with the FM Diversion Authority and other flood mitigation committees. Commissioners are committed to working toward permanent flood protection for Clay County. In closing, the Clay County Board of Commissioners would like to thank our citizens for their ongoing support as stewards of your tax dollars. This board is committed to providing the services you have come to count on in the most efficient, cost-effective, and professional manner possible. I would also like to thank my fellow commissioners for their leadership and hard work. And lastly, I would like to acknowledge the work of our county employees who implement the vision of this board on a day-to-day basis. Please feel free to contact any of the county commissioners or county administration at any time if you would like to share your feedback or suggestions. Thank you and best wishes for 2020. Steve wanted me to memorize that, but I really didn't. Okay, let's see. Next, election of the 2020 chair and vice chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before, do I say, want to thank you for your leadership for the past year. You did a great job and helped guiding us in our decisions. With that, I would like to nominate Commissioner Gross as the 2020 board chair.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second for Commissioner Gross to be the chair for 2020. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And vice chair.
Mr. Chair, I would also move that Commissioner Haney be vice chair for 2020.
Motion and a second to nominate Commissioner Haney as vice chair for 2020. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations.
No, we'll do that later. I think you two can switch.
Switch your name, please. Oh, thank you for electing me. I hope it's a good thing. I think the first order business, like Commissioner Campbell already stated, that this past year under the guidance of Grant, I can only hope to keep the continued leadership that he has shown. And thank you very much, Grant, for your leadership.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it. And with that, we'll move on to establish the board of commissioners' schedule for next, for this year, excuse me. I guess normally we meet the first four Tuesdays of the month at 8:30, and there's no regular meetings on Tuesdays.
The fifth Tuesday.
The fifth Tuesday. Fifth Tuesday of the month, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, I would move that calendar.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Kevin and a second by Grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next thing we move on to is the designation of newspapers, which will be a resolution number 202001204.
I'd like to make a motion to approve motion 202001 through 202004.
Second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second for the, to designate, we have to beat those things out that we probably should announce that it's the Holy Herald will be designated as the official newspaper for 2019. Barnesville Record is hereby designated by Clay County, at which newspapers with the notice of list of real property taxes and penalties become delinquent on the first Monday of January. And the Clay County Union is hereby designated by Clay County Board of Commissioners to publish the first printing of Clay County financial statement, and the extras hereby designated by Clay County Board of Commissioners to publish the second printing of Clay County financial statement. We've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next thing we're going to do is committee appointments. I don't know if you read the appointments over. I'm sure you have. I know the one appointment that I'm on, the West Central, we need to get a replacement for that one. I'm not going to be able to serve, I've already served six years on that, so someone needs to replace that.
Here we also have the library that needs to be done, too. Is that?
It's on the.
Yeah.
Well, Commissioner Gross, when does the West Central board meet? Is it what?
They three times a year. I think March, June, and August, September, November, something like that. And they meet on a, I think it's on a Monday, around 12 o'clock.
Yeah, 12 to 3 p.m., and the meeting locations rotate, which are 25 miles.
Did you have interest in that? Yes, I could do that.
I'll make a motion to add the West Central board to Commissioner Haney's portfolio.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, anybody else that wants to add some boards or?
Well, I think we need to also act on the library one, and I know that Commissioner Haney's been on that, and I think their recommendation is they'd like to see him back on there again, so I would move Commissioner Haney to the Laurel Library Board.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Haney to the library board. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any other changes we've got?
Commissioner Gross, I this week attended the Clay County Substance Abuse Committee, and that's a committee that's been working quite regular on different substance issues throughout the county along with public health. And now with the T-21, the tobacco ban that happened nationwide, they're expecting to kind of ramp up those committee discussions. And if it's the board's wishes, I'd like to attend that as part of my portfolio.
Is that a separate thing then, or is that a new committee?
Well, it's a new committee, but they've been meeting, and I just think because it deals with policy and we'll possibly have some discussions about what it affects, how it affects Clay County businesses, I think it's important that we have.
I'll second it.
I guess I did, what's the, what do they call themselves?
The Clay County Substance Abuse Committee.
Okay. And that was established by who?
Well, it's Jason McCoy from Public Health, Rory Beal from Public Health is there, the sheriff's department, Morehead Police Department, and then the schools are part of the dialogue as well.
Yeah, I think it's good. Okay, we've got a motion and a second for Commissioner Mojo on the Clay County Substance Abuse Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would also, I would also move that the 2020 Policy Committee and Voting Delicent appointments remain the same for the AMC policy committees, unless there's a concern amongst any commissioner.
My only question is, do I?
Can we, I got a motion, I don't know if we can.
Do we need to act on the extension, AMC extension? Is that part of that? Or is this just policy?
We can act on that separately. This would be just policy, but we can act on that.
Well, there's no change in that, is there? Do we have to make a motion?
We need, we need to act on it.
Okay. Very good. Then we've got a motion on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And then, Mr. Chair, I would also then move to have Commissioner Mojo serve on the AMC Extension Committee. I think she just was put as chair of that group, so I think it would make sense that we have her go back.
Second. Okay. Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Now, we don't, anybody else wants to get off the committee, get on the committee?
You know, I think, you know, Ms. Chair, if I, just to comment, I think typically what we've done is we reviewed this, the first one, then we confirm it, maybe have a little bit more, allow for a little more dialogue next week, and if that's okay with you, I think that.
No, that's fine. I just want to know if anybody else got some wishes that they want to bring forth.
There certainly is going to be some of these committees that are going to be ending this year, mainly some construction committees, which thankfully will be done, and we'll probably start a new one.
Maybe new ones, sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to the food contract. With the juvenile center detox center, Julie Salat and Troy we got coming, and James. Think we discussed these bits last week, and you're going to come back with some information for us?
Yes, thanks for having us again today. As you recall, we had two bits for food service for the jail detox and juvenile detention. Trinity Food Services and Summit Food Services. Trinity Food Services and Summit Food Services, Summit Food Services is our current vendor. There's been discussion amongst the group, as well as with the county administrator, in regards to these two bid options. And as a group, we feel we'd be in the best interest of Clay County to go with Trinity Food Services at this time. James had come up with some number of figures, if he would like to explain those, but there's a cost savings by going with Trinity overall.
Okay, good.
Overall, this contract doesn't include the National School Lunch Program, but the quality of food, everything's going to still be to standard, everything like that. But we're not going to get reimbursed for the National School Lunch Program, the juvenile center isn't, so it's going to be more expensive for Clay County for the juvenile center. But overall, Trinity's came in so much lower than Summit, that the county's going to save so much more money based on how much meals are purchased.
So why don't we qualify for the food service program anymore?
Well, see, that's, they're not in the contract to follow the National School Lunch Guidelines, which is a lot of administrative type of work. The quality of food and everything is almost identical. Basically, what it is, it's a higher, a lot of connection, but then there's a higher fiber content, so instead of getting a cup of potatoes, they get half a cup of potatoes and a cup, half a cup of beans, now they're just going to get a cup of potatoes. But it's not necessarily lost, it's just that they're not contracted to follow that. That doesn't mean that I still can't try to hit that standard administratively in-house.
With the new school lunch program, as someone who has kids that eat those, it's changed a lot in the last few years. And I think by not being confined to what those restrictions are, it's not that the kids are getting less food, it'll just change in what it is a little bit, but my kids get off the bus starving because they're not getting as much of those starches as maybe they need.
Exactly.
You know, Commissioner Gross, I think the simple way to answer your question is that the first time we put those bids out, we saw a significant increase in the bid price in them needing to meet the criteria of the National Food Program. And, you know, so by not having that as a requirement in our bid, it brought the prices down, yet our supervisors are telling us that we're going to probably still be able to match closely what that program would be. So I, clearly, we would be, we would be talking about a higher bid price if we included the National Food Program.
Correct.
So, but I think the net is probably still to our favor by not having it.
Well, it sounds that way, but I just wondered why we didn't qualify or whatever. Okay, very good. Okay. Anything further, Troy, you have anything, or?
And so if I can ask, when are we, when are we looking at this starting, and when will they start with our new kitchen?
Well, we would notify Trinity today and give them the start date of February 7th, and we'll contact Summit to ensure that they continue our food service up until that time.
Julie, what is, there's a little bit of time until February 7th, and so what is the contract with Summit in terms of how long?
Sure. So, yeah, our contract actually ended at the end of 2019, but we have an addendum that states that they would continue honoring our food prices until the completion of Phase Two of our facility, and so I would like to hope that they would honor that, those food prices, which means they would provide us our food for that time period. But, you know, there's always that concern.
If they wouldn't honor that, is Trinity, would they be eligible to start out sooner?
No, they would not. There is no kitchen for them to cook in.
All right. Very good. All right. We have a motion to approve Trinity as to serve for our meals for the county. Is there a second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing we got, increase in construction facility budget. Julie, you got that one, too?
I do have that one, too. Justin's going to assist me at this one. As we've been meeting with our construction meetings every couple weeks, there's been a couple items that have come up that the jail feels that they need, so we need, we were requesting that we increase our FFNE budget, and there's three items in particular that we want approval to purchase, as well as getting the increased money to cover those costs. The first one would be our fingerprint machine, and we did have that in our budget for 2020, but it was cut, which is understandable, but the fingerprint machine is really for the public, so that the jail staff can provide public fingerprints, as well as for the employees of Clay County. We do the employee prints for all the agencies in the Clay County, and right now, our current machine is hit and miss whether it works at all. There are days they can show up for their fingerprints and it doesn't work, but then the next time it does. It's something we really need to have, so we have, we're requesting that we get that replaced. The cost for that is $9,854. Nope, I apologize. $9,914. The second item that we're requesting funds for is for cook correctional supplies, and that would be to supply our kitchen with everything that we would need to operate the facility. We discussed that it would be best if, once the jail opens our kitchen, that everything in that kitchen belongs to Clay County, so that when a vendor comes in, we know it's our equipment, and if they should leave, we know that everything should stay, and that we just felt it would be a cleaner and a better way to operate that kitchen, so we're requesting additional funds to pay for those additional items that we feel that we would need to operate that kitchen. And that ran around $15,796. And then the last item we're requesting for is accurate controls, put an additional camera viewing station in. Our jail sergeants, one of their responsibilities is to supervise staff and review all incidences. Right now, the only way they can do that is if they're in mash control with other staff present. It makes it pretty difficult for our supervisors to review other employees' work performance when they're being watched by perhaps even that employee. So we're requesting that we add an additional station into our sergeant's office, and that's going to run just under $10,000. So we are requesting overall, in addition to our FFNE budget of $35,564.38.
Okay, I noticed on the fingerprint thing, does every county have one of those things?
Pretty much all counties provide public fingerprinting.
Because I see that the state sort of mandated all the home or foster care, that they all have to be fingerprinted, and all those.
There's a lot of positions, even outside of county, that require fingerprints, all the teaching license, I mean, we were getting requests a couple times a week for public fingerprints, and we turned them down because we do not have a fingerprint machine to do it. The only fingerprints we're doing right now are the employee ones, and that's only when we can get them done. We're even having to refer them to other agencies at this point, because our machine is so unreliable.
And, Mr. Chair, Julie, we actually do get some revenue out of that if we were able to provide, provide that service to the public.
So for the public, we charge them $10, and we were, we are requesting that, once we receive those minds, we put it into the revenue accounts, and then for any maintenance for this particular machine, we use that revenue money to fix it. We don't charge employees for prints, so.
Commissioner Gross, I thought we'd approved this piece, I thought we just took the scanner out and left this in.
That is correct, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, but it was inadvertently removed completely, so there's $14,000 originally set up for that, but they've gone back and found a cheaper one, but it was there, you approved that, and it was inadvertently all removed.
So this is in addition to your budget, then?
To the FFNE construction budget.
Yeah, if the board remembers, it's probably going on two years ago, we came in front of the board and requested FFNE funds for the construction of the new facility, in total We've reached that limit, so we're requesting the additional funds to increase that fund.
Well, I don't have a question, I have a comment. It's, you know, we reviewed these items, they're, you know, I think they're appropriate. The fact that we should have, we shouldn't have part of our equipment in the kitchen that we know is ours and part somebody else's, that can, just leads to finger pointing down the road. So it's just best that we have it all in our own hands, and I, there certainly is funds available, either through the contingency or leftover bond dollars for the project, so this is not going to require us to take this even out of reserves, so.
So the sales tax can be used?
Yeah, sure, that can, well, the sales tax is used to pay back the bond, but there's still bond dollars available.
That qualifies.
I guess my question would be also, is, now $15,000 in equipment, they bring the food in, and we need $15,000 to serve the food then, or what kind of equipment is this?
No, so the facility, when it was made, a lot of the big items, like the stoves, the fryers, the ovens, those types of things came with part of the construction costs of the building. We're talking smallwares, anything from pots and pans to...
Spatulas.
Some small shelving items, just serving containers and stuff like that, that, I guess we originally didn't realize that that falls on us to cover, we've never had a kitchen before, so when that was brought up to us, we thought, oh, we better get on this, and the price tag of that cut up a little higher.
So that was not included in the bid in any way?
No.
Very good, okay.
I, you know, I think, when you compare, it seems like an awful lot of money for kitchen utensils and that type of thing, but when we're talking about potentially up to 180 meals three times a day, all of that stuff is being used for all those purposes, including trays to get them to where they need to go, and it adds up, but hopefully that'll last a long time, so.
That's the cooks direct.
Cooks correctional is the smallware kitchen items, yep.
And so then the accurate controls is the monitors?
Correct.
So on the exceptions piece, it says this quote assumes that the facility has the wiring installed, ready and ready, are those components ready?
I'm going to work with Tim Dent to get, it's just a CAT 6 data line that we have to run to our security electronics room. I think it'll be something pretty quick and easy, that won't really be an additional cost to the county, but I think it's something that Tim's department probably is able to take care of.
Okay, we got three different items that we're looking at, then. Okay, we have a motion to approve the $35,564.38. Is there a second in the motion?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joe, it's the next. He wants to do a chiller, we don't need a chiller this time of year, do we? Okay, there you go. Okay, Joe, you're here to move forward with revised chiller overall, controls upgrade.
Yes, yeah, back in December 17, I came and asked for, the original project was going to be just a chiller overhaul project, and this is something that's done every 10 years, but after the fact, I found, or got some information that was a game changer to me as far as the controls that go on this chiller, that these were both, the overhaul and the controls were both on the capital building plan for a few years now. My goal was to go after that, controls in the fall, but knowing that when you do the overhaul and you have the controls, you get a quite a bit savings on that control. And so I felt that it was a better package deal to go do both same time this fall, or I mean, this, this winter here. So what I did is I asked Chiller Systems and Train to resmit their quotes, and Chiller System came in at 42,235, and Train came in at 42,925. So these, again, were, it's going to be split three ways between Building Improvement Fund 19 and Georgia's FSC Operating Fund, and then Juvenile, James is going to, for the 2020 budget, so. But yeah, with that, I would request to move forward with Chiller Systems on this, so. And this would be a revised project from what was approved on the 19th of December, or 17th of December.
I'll make a motion to approve the request and go with Chiller Systems.
I'll second that request. Okay, we've got a motion in the second to approve chiller systems, cost of $42,235. Any further discussion?
I will say, it is nice to see when the proposals are so close.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's nice to see that they're...
Yeah, very close, and then I felt that with the controls and the overhaul, this is a very good price that we got on this, so I, I'm very happy with the price that came in on this, so.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, with that, we'll move into the right of entry for biotic and geomorphous purposes. Rob Hoy, Eric, and Jessica?
Yeah, we've, actually, Chris is here, he...
Oh, Chris.
I was supposed to have trial in mind, but we finished it today early, so if I've been involved with it so far, I thought I'd relieve Bob of that, and they come today.
Okay. So maybe I'll start things off here and see if there's any questions, and Chris can add some more details, and Jess can add some more details as well. Thanks for your time this morning. We have in front of you today two resolutions that we are asking for your consideration. Both of these are to seek rights of entry on properties that we need to do some survey work for the FM area diversion project. I might start with the resolution, it's 2002-6, I'm not sure it's numbered in there, but it's the resolution with just one property owner. If you recall, back in December, we had brought forth a resolution to you, I wasn't able to make that meeting, but we had brought forth a resolution to you, asking for permission to request rights of entry on, I believe there were 17 property owners. After that resolution was passed, it was identified that there was one of those property owners that the ownership had changed, and so this, the second resolution in your packet here today that just has the one property listed, the Askergard Living Trust, has changed some ownership, and so because of that ownership change, we brought that back to you today just to make sure we've got sort of good housekeeping, basically the same provisions that we had talked about back in December. And so the second resolution in front of you today, there are 17 property owners, coincidentally, sent a heap of properties for that as well. That resolution is to conduct biotic and geomorphic surveys on those properties. We have been in contact with those property owners starting back in November, asking them to sign the rights of entries. We did have a mailing go out to all the property owners, inviting them to an informational meeting over at the Law Enforcement Center in early December. We had a number of these property owners show up at that informational meeting, and subsequent to that informational meeting, our land agents have had quite a bit of follow-up with these property owners, asking, you know, questions and providing some feedback and things. So today, though, however, we have this list in front of you of people that have not signed that right of entry, and the reason we're here today, I guess from a timing standpoint, ultimately, the Corps is aiming to start, Corps of Engineers is aiming to start doing some of their biotic and geomorphic surveys in the spring and through the summer timeframe. A couple months ago, we had worked with the Corps of Engineers and developed what we called an action plan, that spelled out all of the steps and timeframes associated with securing the rights of entries to allow them to do their monitoring work. We've been working primarily with the MCC JPA to follow that action plan, although, as you're aware, there are some steps in that action plan that the MCC JPA cannot perform, and so they passed a resolution asking you for consideration of this, of your resolution in front of you today. Just a few other points on that action plan, if you're interested, we have copies of all this stuff, I guess didn't want to bury you with paperwork, but if you're interested, we certainly could pass those out. The action plan does spell out, you know, all the steps that we've done in terms of sending the request for rights of entry to property owners in November, having an informational meeting, following up with them. We did take this list of unsigned rights of entries to the MCC JPA Board in second half of December. They passed their resolution, which then comes to Clay County, and so we're following up with those steps.
So didn't any of them sign out for the first round, or?
Yeah, so in Minnesota, there's roughly 90 properties that we need to get these rights of entries on for bio geo surveys. Roughly half of those are government-owned, and so we'll be back, I guess coordinating with Steve, some of those government-owned parcels are owned by Clay County, others by the city of Morehead. So of that, roughly half, then, say there's 45 that are privately owned, we have about 17 here today that we're asking for resolution.
I noticed that in the second resolution, that parcel number is not listed on the first parcel.
Right, right, and so the reason for that is the second resolution is for more design-type surveys.
Okay, so I mean, that's... Okay, so I mean, that, the first would be included in the second, then?
Uh, there are two separate resolutions.
Yeah.
And two separate types of surveys.
Okay.
The, the first ones that we did, those were necessary for potential soil borings
Yes.
along the dam part of the project. The, these, on this one here for the BioGeo, that covers the entire expansion from south all the way north up towards Georgetown.
Correct.
Where there's, where they still need to do this, this testing for BioGeo, so.
Yep.
That's why, that's why the list is different on, on this one. Okay?
So I guess just to, i-if, if you are willing to pass the resolution today, typical with the last discussion, there would be a letter sent out to the property owners, giving them a 10-day notice, you know, sort of urging them to sign. Chris and his team will work to, to serve notice to these property owners, and I think some of them are snowbirds, and we're having a little trouble tracking down a few people, so if you know where anybody's at, that'd be helpful, but. So that follows the normal process, and then if they, you know, so they get another warning shot, I guess if you will. And then at that point, if they haven't signed continually, then there would be the.
So, so are the, um, in, in that letter that goes out, obviously, that some of these may have attended the meeting that was held at the Law Enforcement Center, and some of them
Yep.
probably did not.
Right.
Are, are we gonna be very clear as to what it is we're asking for? What the length of that may be, and, and where on their property that it might happen? I, it, all of, all these BioGeo technical ones, if I know, the vast majority of them are right along the riverbank.
Correct. Yep.
Where they're, you know, or if I understand it, the, the court even said that they probably wouldn't even have to use their property to access, they can go right up the bank, I think, is the way I was
Right.
told, that they would do a lot of it, so.
Yep.
You know, is it, am I correct on that?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, a lot of the studies are in the river, they wanna stay as much in the river to measure as possible. They don't, you know, really want to be, they want to be as least invasive as possible. And when these letters go to property owners, you know, they received a map showing, you know, where they would monitor, or where they plan on monitoring, and they were all along the riverbanks.
And, and some of these might end up reverting to a long-term?
Yes, so, um, good question. So right now, we're, we're seeking a right of entry to do sort of the first round of monitoring on these parcels. There was some monitoring probably six or seven years ago on a few of these. But now, as the project has advanced a bit, and they have a little better feel of, of where they want to monitor, this round of monitoring in 2020 will, will help the Corps and some of their scientists identify, is this really the right spot, or should we tweak it a little bit? Once they've conducted this round of monitoring in 2020, the Corps will then firm up the locations where they really want to continue monitoring, you know, year after year, not year after year, but, you know, into the future. And at that point, they will identify an easement request, and they'll come back to us and ask us to secure easements. And so as we've been talking with these property owners and at the informational meeting at the Law Enforcement Center, we did explain to property owners that.
You provided this timeline and a fact sheet too, talking about it?
Yep. And so they're, they're aware that we're asking for right of entry now, and ultimately likely gonna be asking for an easement in the future. The MCC JPA board has established a, the minimum payment of $750 for those easements, and so we're offering to pay people for that.
That's for the long term.
All right.
Is there a time limit on how long this?
So the, the right of entry will extend through 2021, and the goal is to complete all the monitoring in 2020, but if there's a flood this year, the Corps wanted to make sure that we extended it just long enough in case they can't get the monitoring done, so. I'm hoping for not a flood, just to be clear. I hope it not a flood.
So, so were they have designated, where, 'cause they'll probably put a pin or something?
Um, not every, not every parcel, but many of the parcels will have kind of a survey monument on both sides of the river, for example. And they'll, they call it transect from those points, and they wanna measure the road between those two transects.
So if, if a landowner has a problem with a exact location, you talk about being able to tweak, is there gonna be the ability to tweak that?
Yeah.
A hundred feet this way or 50 feet that way?
Yeah, and so as the land agents have been out negotiating with people, and the Corps has been, I guess reasonably flexible, whatever that means, but, uh, so if the property owners have some specific site constraints or things, that they can convey that through their land agent, they can convey that and say, well, I'd really prefer this, you know, location was just a little bit over because of, you know, whatever circumstance. They do, if those monuments are gonna be placed in a tillable area, they do bury them a couple feet, and so that they're not gonna be impacted by a flower.
And we did, on the North Dakota side, pay for the monument that I placed, was it 250?
Yeah. Yeah, if, if there's a monument.
Yep.
We also provided pictures too, um, if you guys want this, and you can see it's about this big. And it goes around the surface.
Then if they have to intrude with the vehicle, and it makes tracks due to soggy ground, then those tracks will be reduced and completely obliterated after they're done. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. I guess on the North Dakota side, where we maybe have a little longer history doing this, the Cass County Joint Board has committed to not only payment for crop damage, but also any field damage, and I believe the MCC JPA is following suit with that provision. Don't anticipate that to happen. We've, you know, been doing these types of surveys for nearly a decade now, and only had a handful where those situations arose, but yes.
It's probably a more likely scenario on the, on this first list
Right.
where there's soil borers involved, because there, there's the equipment to
Yep.
to drill the hole. It's bigger equipment, and there's likely a chance, yeah.
But all of this is pretty much along the riverbed, right?
The, the BioGeo surveys are all along the waterways.
So there's probably no cropland in there, no?
There might just be on the very edges of cropland, but generally, it's along the banks of the rivers and the waterways. Wobegon Creek.
Chris, you have anything?
The, the process will be the letter that goes out, and we, we will have that personally served. Last time, the letter that came from the county, we didn't personally serve it, but that just added to another letter from me that's in the process of being personally served. And, and I've never had this much trouble serving people. You know, we sent it out for service three weeks, four weeks ago, and we still have six letter left that we, that we need to serve. People are going south, people are dodging service, people have changed addresses, it's, it's been a challenge, so. So we'll start with the letter that comes from, rather from you, Jim Cross, as the, uh, the one being served, and that gets the 10-day notice, so. And we will attach a map as to where on the property the, the surveys will happen. Now, that's not something that we did previously, not because it was, you know, potentially over the entire parcel here with biotic and geomorphological, it would be, you know, within that, that ribbon around the waterway.
Jessica, any further, anybody else?
I'll make motion to adopt resolution 2020-05.
I'll second it. Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on that resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2020-06.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, but Jim, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, four, four, and one against.
Thank you.
If anybody wants copies, I can leave them here with Steve.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, why don't you, I would like one.
Okay, with that, we'll go on to Clay County Leadership Academy, Mark Sloan.
I am, uh.
Gonna give us some information here.
Well, I'm just gonna make a few remarks that, Mr. Chair, as you recall back, this past September, we had a strategic planning meeting. In the, one of the areas that we identified, you know, had to do with recruitment training, retaining our employees. And also looking at, uh, as we lose our leaders here at the county, how, how do we identify that, that next level of people that are coming up? And so one of the things that we've taken a look at in the stride over the last year, in addition to the other recruitment retaining issues, is we're hearing from our staff, is we want additional supervision training, uh, and, and what can we, what could we do, and what could we offer? Uh, and so our Clay County Leadership Academy presentation this morning really came one of our stride, and so with that, I'll turn, turn my remark.
Yes, it's an exciting idea we came up with, as we've been hearing some requests for some additional training, and we're doing everything we can to retain those good employees that we have, we wanna keep them here. So we came up with this idea of doing the Leadership Academy, where we can offer them some training in-house, at a relatively easy way to do it, uh, low-cost impact, all those kind of things, and then give them some skills to make them even better leaders. So what we came up with is a program that's gonna be 12 months long, they're gonna be once a month for two hours, and the, the training will take two hours, and then they'll be followed by a lunch. And the idea behind that is we'll be able to get some training in, and then get a little camaraderie amongst those folks that are there, so they can get to know each other a little bit better and work together better. And then after, after the 12 months, there'll be a graduation, which will be here, we'll bring them to the board, and we'll give them a certificate, and we'll have another batch of great leaders. I just handed you the curriculum we've come up with so far. And it's the, actually, there's 13 bullets on there, 'cause the 13th one is graduation, but the first one is gonna be just, you know, introduction, and we're gonna get, you know, uh, one of the big things we wanna teach our leaders of, and we, is the, you know, a lot of people work in their own little departments, and try to give them a little better picture of the entire organization, what it looks like, and it probably builds some excitement for the program. The next sessions, two through seven, are all HR. Darren has put together the, uh, materials for those, and he's gonna be teaching those, they're all, all the things you need to know once you become, 'cause what happens is, you know, you got the, your best worker, and he does a great job, and then he's promoted, or she, yes, gets promoted up, and, uh, all of a sudden, they're a leader or a supervisor, and there's some things they need to know how to do. And that's what those, those, uh, HR sessions are gonna teach them most things that they need. After that, we're gonna get in more into the, uh, the leadership and the management skills, and at, at that point in time, we're looking to bring in some outside trainers that can teach some of those skills, and, you know, dealing with difficult people, and all those kind of things that we'd like to teach our folks, so that's, that's what we're doing, and I think it's an exciting program, and it's a really, uh, something new that we've never actually offered here. We're gonna spend a little bit of money on it, and the money we are gonna spend, and we already have, it's in our, we have a training budget, and that's where we're gonna designate some of those funds for this program.
So how do you apply for this program?
Uh, this first year is what we call it the pilot year, the first year, we asked supervisor, our department heads to nominate people, and what specifically we were targeting are new supervisors, or existing supervisors, or those people that are about to be supervisors, so we have 21 people nominated. And there are folks now, that most of them are in a supervisory role now, some, some are freshly into it. So we've got those for the, our first pilot year. Our hope is, depending on how it goes, but our hope is they offer this in multiple years. In year two, we would like to offer it up for, where you can self-nominate, and so as employee that might wanna learn how to do some of these things, even though they may not be in a position to be a supervisor, might wanna learn this, and we'll, we're gonna look at that, but we'll see how that looks a year from now. But right now, yeah, it was the department heads that nominated the, the folks, 'cause we need their input too, 'cause we're gonna take them out of their job for two hours a month, and we need them to commit to that, and that's why we went to the department heads first and say, you guys support this, and if so, give us a list of people, and they, they, we got a nice list?
I was just gonna say, I think this is a great idea. I mean, I, I always thought it's one of the shortcomings in governmental entities, is that they many times promote people to self-supervisory positions, and they don't have any training, they don't know what the expectations are, and and so I, I think this is a big step forward in resolving some of those issues, so.
Yes.
I mean, I support backup training too, very much so, but I'm looking at, if we go into the second year, the third year, I mean, we've only got 21 positions or something like that.
Right.
We're gonna have a lot of people. I mean, we're looking at this program to continue year after year, I take it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and part of that was, the logic behind it, we were looking at was, you know, as an employer, when we're talking about hiring and all these issues, one of the things we really wanna do is take those good employees we've got and keep them, even if it's a different role. So that's what we're trying to do, is figure how to, that, that's kinda where this concept came from, how do we come up with a training program or some kind of package where we can nurture those folks and then break, keep them on board, and that's what we're.
And Mr. Chair, it's not just the department heads that we're looking at, we're looking at developing leadership on those other layers also.
Oh, okay.
And, and I think one of the things that we found in, in talking with our employees is that it isn't always, it, it's creating those opportunities for additional learning, and that they understand there's only, you know, X number of supervisor roles and X number of department heads, but that ongoing training for especially, well, all of our staff. Uh, but one of the things we've heard a lot from our younger employees is we want that, those learning opportunities to continue.
Well, I think, I, I'm just looking at the first seven, I think that's just so great that we get, I mean, I, I know we tell people what their benefits are when they're first hired, you know, but when you're first hired, it's too much information, you know, and, and, uh, I think this is great to let our people know what their benefits are, so that they know, you know, if I save my sick leave, what happens, you know, that's a great thing, you know?
Right.
You know, should I use up my sick leave by the end of the year or not, you know, it's just, uh,
Yes.
I think it's great that employees know their benefits, and that's a big thing. Very good.
Well, I'll start off, I, I agree with both of you that this is a good idea, but the cost accountant in me is coming out. And I, and I, you know, I, I just think that the cost to this is, is far more than the $2,500 we're talking about, because you said it yourself, Mark, we're taking these, each of these people two hours a month away, and when you calculate 20, that's
Right.
24 hours per person, times 20 people, that's 480 hours
Right.
of work. That's not there. So, you know, I, I just, just so, just so that we're clear on that, and, and if I, you know, so I took that night, divided into this $2,500, which you're probably gonna be using to pay these off people and stuff like that, but even if you did that, that's 521 an hour.
Right.
You know, so, so, because these people doing this aren't doing what they were doing.
Right.
So, so there is a cost.
There's, I agree with you, there's gonna be a cost, but we're gonna come out with a better employee.
Yeah, that's right, I, I, I'm just, I'm just saying that the, the cost is more than what's shown here.
And Mr. Chair, and members of the commission, one of the other issues to take into consideration is, not all of them, but a number of these employees also have to have ongoing training that they're receiving through, through their departments, and so we'll use the example for, for social services. They have to have so many ongoing hours of training that this will not be able to be utilized in lieu of something else. And so, um, some of those funding dollars are already available through their departments, and so not all, not every department, but, but the Juvenile Center has to go through, every, every councilor has to go through 40 hours of additional training. Well, these 24 hours would be able to be utilized as a part of the, a part of that training, where they would be off the floor otherwise.
Okay.
So, Jake, we just wanted to let you know that we're working on this.
Well, I, I think it's a great thing. I, you know, sometimes I worry, and a lot of different things, about having the scope too large. And this is, this isn't, I mean, this is an intense list of a lot of different things to cover. And I, I might disagree on, on the benefits thing, I think we should, I don't necessarily think that explaining benefits and open enrollment and HR benefits is something we should be covering in the Leadership Academy, that really should come out of our HR department to where, you know, and I think you're doing a good job of it based on an email that we got about 2020 changes and what's coming out, and so you know, when I think of Leadership Academy, I think it would, it'd be more so some of these step progressions and, and grooming those, those next generation of, of directors, kind of that avenue. So that, that's just my, my feedback on, on that piece. But, you know, I trust that you'll make good decisions on that. I, I do think that $2,500 in the training fund seems to be low in what you have 20, 21 people. I'm not sure what your total training funds are, but I hope that it's something that can continue in years on, so, kudos.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it is, you know.
It's a great idea, I think, too, and, like I said, but, you know, it's a start, and it's like anything else, I mean, as you get into it, you I mean, as you get into it, you maybe, I'm sure you'll be tweaking it. You know, we'll find out what's valuable and what isn't.
Sure. Yeah, that's why we're calling this here our pilot year, basically to feel out what works and what doesn't.
And, you know, the reason I emphasize the Human Resources Department as far as, because I think we have our employees know what their benefits are. They're more excited about their job and stuff like that, you know. Used to work in Human Resources and people, when should I start planning for retirement? The day you're hired. You know, that's when you start planning for it, you know. It's just saving your sick leave or whatever and working with your vacation time, you know. And it's just, I don't know when there should be thought that, but I don't know if that should be in the leadership program or not. But I think that's very important that they understand their job. You know, what it's going, what it's doing for their lives and stuff like that. You know, so, okay. Do we need a motion on this to go ahead with this or do we just do that?
If you'd like to make one, we can, as long as we, we just want to be in awareness that this is something that we are doing.
Okay, well, thank you for starting that.
Good work.
Hey, you're going to stay up here, Steve, huh? Construction engineers change.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This morning, I have three requests before you for change orders. Change order 27, 28, and 29. Change order 27 is probably the best change order that you've, we're going to see during this process. With the completion of the Law Enforcement Center, change order 27 is, is providing us with the construction management unused contingency credit of $75,675.91. And this will be, again, credited against the GMP, so we'll see a reduction.
Okay. Any questions concerning that one?
No, no, just for clarification, that, that is the unused contractor contingency. There was another $250,000 in owner contingency that was never used. So just so that we're aware, that this is just that piece that construction engineers had the right to use if they needed to, but they didn't need it. And so we get, we're getting credit for that.
Okay, right. So we got about like, what we say, $75,000 savings there.
I made a motion to approve change order 27.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Jenny, second by Kevin. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes. Change order, next change order we got.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Change order 28 has to do with Phase Two of the, of the correctional facility. We have four different items totaling $11,963. PR 70 is adding stainless steel corners in the kitchen so as they move carts and they're not damaging the walls. There is a, PR 71 is adding a motorized damper in the kitchen. This was a code issue, making sure that in the event that we have some sort of smoke issue that it isolates it just to the kitchen area and doesn't suck it into the rest of the correctional facility. PR 72 is a detention light fixture in the elevator. Again, for whatever reason, when they, when they set up the elevator, they didn't have that fixture there. And CP 40 is replacing the valley gutter to match the new concrete. That has to do with the, the new asphalt project that we did this year. They had to make some adjustments. We had to do it to make sure the grading matched. So we flow to, to the drains. And so that, again, totals $11,963, which would be adjusted to the, to the GMP.
So who is, who's going to be paying for this then? Or this comes out?
This comes out of our contingencies in the correctional facility.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, last week, when I reported on our, on these projects, I reported on what, what the remaining contingency dollars were. And that, those numbers included the anticipation of these being paid. So, you know, there still is, there's still plenty of contingency dollars left in the, in the jail project. So if we go back to what I reported on last week, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but we're still in good shape on our contingencies.
I'm holding for change order 28.
Second. Here we got a motion by Grant, second by Jim. Approve change order number 28, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion carries.
All right, change order 29 is specific to the, to the juvenile center project. I will start out by, by saying that a number of these issues that are on this list, we've discussed it at the board level. They've been approved at the committee level. And we haven't, we've just not been in a position where a change order's come through to capture those different items. And so the, the change order for, for number 29 is $70,000, $71,742. When we take a look at the revision, CP 47 has to do with sprinkler heads in three different areas of the facility. They had to change those out ensuring that they weren't tamper-proof or were tamper-proof. CP 40 has to do with a code issue that came out of fire protection and jack and eye guard, making sure that we have the proper circuits, circuits in these different, in a number of different areas. CP 21 is part of the original design. There wasn't, there was not heat that was included into, into the sally port and with the, with the sprinkler, sprinkler head there, we needed to make sure that we got that heat in there.
But honestly, why? I mean, I'm, we all know that that's something that is needed. I feel like I'm, I'm not blaming you, I just, this just is,
That was my question.
Every single time, same with the gym, gym padding. You go into any elementary school gym and there's padding in there.
Yes, I think there's been a number of things that has been a little bit frustrating that weren't included in, in the initial planning of this process. And there are a few here. The CP 48, I think that was what we, we spoke, spoke about a number of weeks ago. Our concern was originally that this was going to be in the $30,000 to $40,000 range. They were able to do the flushing for $8,918. The gym padding, again, we've kind of discussed that in previous. This is to cover to make sure that the, that the garage doors are protected from the kids as they are down in the gym. PR 011 has to do with, with the revisions in Phase Two, Three to, to the classroom, the labs and flooring and paint issues that weren't initially included in, in the project. CP 46, we have three locations where the, we had to hook up our domestic water where the piping was undersized. And so we had to make adjustments in, in three different locations for that. And we would never have known that without getting up into, into the roofs to see, see that as part of the design. CP 25 has to do with the intake and exhaust revisions. We've had some extensive discussions here on that issue. Originally, it was going to go to the roof, but getting, going through the hollow core became extremely expensive. And so they had to look at piping it from, from the west, or excuse me, from the east, east out to the west. And so, and then because of the long push, we needed to have a fan that was included in that, in that revision. So total of $71,742 for your consideration.
So that $75,000 we changed on number 27, we were jumping up and down on.
Well, just a different project.
That's a contingency, yes.
Yeah, this is the juvenile project.
What's the juvenile contingency of?
A juvenile contingency, and again, these numbers are the same as to what I would have reported last week. I usually keep those things in my deal.
Yeah, I have.
But those numbers, again, the report that I gave you on, I think the total contingency that we got going on in the juvenile center, and I'm trying to go off my memory right now, but I think it's about a negative $275,000. And that includes these numbers. It's the same as what I reported before. So, and again, now you keep in mind now this, and going to what you said, and I couldn't agree more with the deal about the padding and the heating in the, in the stinking garage, for crying out loud. Why that wasn't included is beyond me. But, but most of these things we're, we're seeing are things that have to do with plumbing issues that you just don't know until you tear it apart. And that's why remodeling is so much harder. And I recall that we even, I even encouraged us to increase the contingency on this project from what was recommended originally. I think we upped it, you know, by $150,000 and we're still short. So, but that's, I, I don't hold me to that number, but I think it's about $275,000. It's whatever it was I reported last week. But there, but we still, we still do have the dollars in the original bonding estimates still to cover that. So, so it's not like we're going to have to come up with additional cash. And if we did, the plan would be to use our revenues over expenditures from the Regional Juvenile Center to cover those.
I think, yeah, I think it's important, from Commissioner Campbell, I think it's important that a number of months ago, a month ago or so, James came forward and there was a discussion as far as how this would be covered. And so this is all still within that scope of that discussion.
I, I understand that. And I know that there have been long discussions and both Commissioner Campbell and Wayland and yourself have been very active in those meetings. But I, to have contingency dollars exceeding what we planned and over half of them, I think, are issues that really are issues that should have been. I get that it costs more money to remodel, I get it. I understand it, was prepared for that. There are issues that are easy, easy to plan for that were missed. And it's because of that that I can't support this today. I, I know that there are issues in here that are needed, but at some point, we paid people to make plans that made sense. And there are things on here and there are things in the past that don't make sense.
Get no argument from us on that, but I'll make a motion to approve change order number 29.
Second.
Here we got a motion, second to approve change order number 29. Any further discussion?
I, you know, I, I can't help but comment on this. You know, we got a gross maximum price from construction engineers and that was based on what construction engineers knew from what the design was of the project. If, I certainly am not one that is going to be willing to point fingers at construction engineers whatsoever. You know, they followed with what design was there. And I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I guess not count with the, you know, you're not going to point fingers, but who do we, is there anybody to blame or do we just accept this stuff, you know, just? Okay, we've got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Order one. Motion passes. Okay, with that, we go into committee reports. Jenny, I started out.
Thank you. I serve on the Cass Clay Food Systems Advisory Commission and we, I will be chairing that board this year. And there are a lot of new faces around that table. And so over the last week, I've been having discussions with Clay County Public Health and Clay County Planning to make sure that the scope of what we're discussing fits with what the original goal was. And so, and also Councilman Curry from the City of Morehead. So I really feel like we have a, some good dialogue that we'll bring forward to that committee next week. I attended the Clay County Substance Abuse Committee and thank you for appointing that to my portfolio. There are some important issues going on in regards to tobacco and the T21 legislative, or not legislative, national law that came into effect. If you recall, several counties, including Otter Tail, changed the law to purchase tobacco to 21. Now that President Trump signed that into law, that as of now, you have to be 21 years old to buy tobacco. And so I, whether any of us agree or disagree with that, I think it's important to have discussions about how as a county we move forward. So good reports from the different, Morehead and Sheriff's Department Law Enforcement on what's going on there in the county and what they're seeing and discussing future, future conversations that we'll have.
So as a county, do we need to do anything with this 21? Or since the President signed it, do we, shouldn't include everybody?
It's my understanding that it's, because it's now the law of the land, that's what it is. So as of, as of December 20th, you had to be 21 to purchase tobacco products. And the law states that you can be 18 and be in possession. So it's not, it's kind of a twofold and so it's confusing. So part of the dialogue is letting, having discussions to let people know what the law is.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, you'll see a lot of the convenience stores downtown right at the front, front door. It'll indicate what Commissioner Mozo shared as far as the 21, 21-year-old rule.
I also attended with Commissioner Gross yesterday. The county-owned property subcommittee had some discussion with FM Trail Blazers. There are a bike club in the area that currently maintains different bike trails in Johnson Park and in Gooseberry and on the Cass County side as well. And they're interested in the potential of, of putting some bike trails in on some county-owned property that we have. And there are some discussions that we need to have with department head staff, but I think it was a good proposal. And there is a lot of enthusiasm from a significant amount of residents regarding something like that. So I think that it's worthwhile discussing. This morning, I attended the FM Chambers Eggs and Issues Training our workforce. Because the City of Morehead School District passed the referendum to support the Workforce Academy, I felt it was important to see what's happening with not only Cass County, but with the Bismarck schools. And I maintain that that will be a huge advantage for Clay County to have that available to the students in all of our school districts. Bismarck has a waiting list of 1,500 applicants for that. And the, it's not just skilled trades that we used to think of. There are so many different areas of employment that these people can, children and youth can be exposed to. And so I'm excited about what the future is for that. That does conclude my report.
I had one meeting, that was yesterday. We had a DA Chair's Coordinating Committee meeting. Basically kind of planning out the calendar for 2020 for the Diversion Authority. There's going to be some transition people probably going to happen. That's going to be on the Diversion Authority Board along with the, there's going to be some changes, not many, but a few to the, I think the finance, potentially for the Finance Committee and lands. I know from the Minnesota side, those of us, Commissioner Wayland and I, will remain on the ones that we've been on. I did suggest that we expand the Outreach Committee to include some other, I brought up the, maybe having somebody from the Chamber, because they've been so involved with this, as well as I suggested Sherri Larson from, who's the Director of the MBA, would be good to be on, on there to give some insight into how we outreach this, you know, on the Minnesota side. So we're, we'll see how that goes. We're going to send some invites out to those people. There was some discussion about, or just some announcement about the Red River Basin Commission Conference that's going to be going on next week in Fargo. Certainly, there's going to be a presentation, I believe, on the 16th that, you know, it's in the morning by our Executive Director, Joel Paulson, to the Red Basin Commission. And unfortunately, I have to be in Fergus Falls for a Lakes Country Service Quarter meeting. I would have loved to have been there for that part. And I think we've decided that those, those meetings, we're going to try to, that have been held every Monday, we're going to go to every, or twice a month, I think is what we're going to try to do on those meetings moving, moving forward. And then we did approve the, or agreed kind of with the proposed calendar of all the meetings for 2020. And that's my report.
Jim?
I didn't have anything.
I had rural Minnesota counties meeting yesterday, and instead of general business meeting, then we had presentations on emergency services, funding issues in the state, and also, they had a good presentation on how transportation funding works in Minnesota, that was it.
Yeah, one meeting I had, Jenny's already reported on, was land management, they're looking to put in this park, it's a sort of a, more of a bike trail than a walk and a hiking trail, so they're looking at, you know, utilizing around 200 acres and putting into 10 to 15 miles of trails in there, so, it's quite a project, and I really have to compliment the guys who are taking on a project like that, that's all on a voluntary basis, and really got some good plans. I guess we just gotta look at that we wanna utilize county-owned land to do some of that stuff. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on the December 31st, I spoke with Scott Fedek in regards to the Campus Master Planning, we are gonna be meeting at the end of this month, but Scott indicated that we should be getting, starting to get some information on options and, and costs associated with that. On the 2nd of January, I met with the Strive for Excellence, we spent a majority of the time talking about the Leadership Academy, which was discussed earlier today. Later that morning, we had county management, again, touch on the Leadership Academy, master planning. That afternoon, I met with Chris Volkers on a series of shared issues between the county and the city. Later that afternoon, we met with Mark Sloan, the Correctional Facility staff, Sheriff's Department, and construction engineers, just to make sure we're clarifying the controls on the doors, doors and cameras in the tunnel leading into the courthouse of who has control over that, and I think we were able to get a good plan to move forward on that. On the 6th, I met, met with Nick from Construction Engineers on the, on the correctional facility, as Julie mentioned, February 7th is our date that we're shooting for, as far as occupancy, and they feel comfortable and confident that we'll be able to hit that deadline. I will have to look at making sure that we have the insurance for, for the additional cost in place by that date, so I've been working with MCIT on that. Later that morning, I met with Tom from, Tom Fuchs from Construction Engineers on the juvenile, on juvenile facility, again, we're looking at mid-March, mid-March there, we did have insurance discussion that we had to work through a number of issues this past Friday, but we made sure that we had coverage, we have coverage, continued coverage until the end of the completion of the project. Commissioner Campbell mentioned the Chair's meeting for the Diversion Authority yesterday, and I also participated in the FM Trail Blazers meeting. Just two quick things, I don't wanna make any assumptions, but our intergovernmental retreat registration came out, so if it's all right with you, I'll, I'll make sure that we have you registered for that. And the other, the other piece is, is that the AMC Legislative Conference came out, I think, yesterday, and that's going to be held the 20, 26th and 27th in St. Paul at Intercontinental Hotel. The rural meeting will also be on the 25th, that evening at 7:00 PM, so, I did send an email out if, if you would like to make sure that you get registered for that hotel, let us know and we'll get that taken care of. That concludes my report.
Okay, anything further, anybody? My turn.